Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if we could move under discussion and action items, Jay, bid opening for the new fire truck up in the agenda to after good stuff. And before we go into water commissioners, is that okay with everybody?
That'd be great.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Agenda's amended. Review and approve minutes from March 13th, 2023, regular select board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Go move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Minutes approved. Any open public comment?
Well, we got Phil and Charlotte.
Okay. Any good stuff? We did get all our playground stuff in for the playground over at the skating rink. So that's gonna be, I think he's already been over there flattening it out. Ricky Reed?
Yeah, he came in today, told me they're gonna start Wednesday, actually.
Yep.
Get everything graded.
Yep. So that's kind of exciting.
Yeah. And Easter Bunny this Saturday.
Oh, yes, that's right. Easter Bunny.
Yep. At the rink.
Okay. So next up, we're opening, bid opening for the new fire truck. One.
We got one in half, six hundred percent were asked to reply.
Hold your applause till the end. Okay, from Desorcy Emergency Products LLC. E1-112 freightliner, 450 horsepower, 1500, 1800 tanker MSRP. The bid price, that price was $586,399. And their bid price was $527,895. And that price includes a commercial chassis voucher of $123,377. There's an optional vehicle trade-in for the 1991 commercial tanker at $18,000. And the 2004 E1 engine for $55,000. Optional prepayment interest, 3%, simple interest per day, less bond cost. The proposal will expire on March 30th, 2023 unless it's accepted. Is there a motion to accept the bid?
That's a good price, is that what you're expecting?
Very good price. And we are gonna do the trade deal.
Okay.
Just because it's guaranteed to get price for the other trucks without sitting on coupons.
Yeah. Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Bid is accepted.
Not a whole lot, sure.
No, there's some major problems happening over there. They only last for six hours on the scene.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wow.
After that, the diesel motor kicks in and will only run for two more hours. And then the truck is dead.
Really?
Yeah. Celia, Los Angeles is one of three or four departments trying one right now.
Yeah.
Money, large scale, long-term event, it's not in the whole lot.
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What a year delivered.
The contract.
Yeah, sure. I'll just hang on to this and send you a copy of it. And then Chief Webb actually paid me a visit earlier this week about some recruitment that they're gonna be doing. WSAX is gonna do a story for you, right?
They're doing it for the whole state.
Cool.
It's called making a fight a fire.org. It is appropriate where we enroll to advertise that we would be doing an open house on May 11 in attempts to recruit a couple more members. They are going on TV with advertisements for it. So they're gonna do all publicity for us.
Nice.
We just have to have the open house.
Wow.
Our hope is to gain a couple more interior certified guys that we can train.
Are they doing this just for volunteer fire departments?
Sure. Well, if you're doing a good job of hard training, it's a home thing, you got it.
There you go. Okay. Thanks.
Cool.
All right. Okay, moving on. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the O&M manual review.
So the state has returned the O&M manual.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
See ya. Yeah, I'll catch up again. The state's returned our O&M manual and has requested the town to answer approximately 50 comments. The hope is to have all the comments answered by the end of April, but we have until June 1st. I've reached out to DuBois and King to help me out on this. What they've done is they've sent me a word file of the O&M manual that they submitted. And I am gonna submit that back to DuBois and King with track changes. And then they're gonna submit it to the state. Most of the revisions are pretty minor. Some of them carry a little bit more weight. But I've probably answered about 20 of them so far and will continue. And like I said, oh, if I did say this, they're due June 1st. And I believe we'll be able to have all the comments answered by then.
Consumer confidence reports.
This is a quick one. The consumer confidence reports are in. They've gotta be mailed out here in the next couple of months. So I'll be working with Celia to get addresses. And we're having off the quick print and get them in the mail.
The wellhouse operating permit review.
So this is actually kind of an accomplishment for me to, the wellhouse hasn't been permitted since it's been built. So it took me a lot of work to learn everything about the Chittenden Disconnect Project. And, you know, after working with DuBois and King and the state, we finally reached the point where a permit was approved, contentioned upon the revisions of the O&M manual. And like I said, those are due June 1st. It's under the comment period right now, but I'm thinking here the next couple of weeks the town should have a permit to operate.
Anybody have any questions under the Board of Water Commissioners? Okay. So a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Lagoon overflow management.
Yes, I didn't have a whole lot to add under sewer Commissioners' report, but I do think it's important to keep the board informed that, you know, when we've got wet weather, like we've seen lately, the ground's frozen, the snow's melting, that the lagoons, the lagoon debt does need to be managed with the generator. And we had to do that last week. It has required us to go over budget on fuel costs and, but, so, and overtime as well. But as I've said at other meetings, that's gonna be part, that is part of the scoping study that the town's performing now. And those improvements are intended to be made with the wastewater treatment plan upgrades.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and into the regular select board meeting?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, department reports, town managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't belabor this whole document, but I'll hit some of the highlights. So meetings and trainings, I try to make all the parks and rec and planning commission meetings, et cetera. So we had a special parks and rec meeting where they had a work session for the summer camp. I attended fair housing training for the community development block grant qualification. Someone has to be qualified for us to apply for VCVP or CBVG grants. I think Judy was before, but I just went ahead and was safe with, I felt like we'd be safer with two qualified personnel. I try to attend all the legislative session reviews that are held by VLCT. These are held virtually and usually once a week. They're very informative and kind of keep me up to speed on what's happening at the State House. I attended my Rutland Regional Planning Commission meeting to review Act 250 projects. The projects that were reviewed at the last meeting was a pretty large solar field in Fairhaven, as well as one in Pittsburgh. And I was gonna add that we had the Easter Bunny coming on Saturday, but we did that in good stuff. Just kind of looking at the near future, this week I've got a traffic advisory council meeting. I believe Bruce, Mr. Selectable Member Boucher is gonna be there at that. And then we have a regional emergency management committee meeting Thursday evening. All right, so I'll just kind of speed my way through this. Policy review and planning, we have two policies in the queue for legal review. The personnel policy is under review right now. Next will be the collections policy. The tool cap, as of today, which the bidding is done tomorrow, the highest bid is $17,500. So it sounds like we've got a pretty good company looking after us there for bids.
The, we'll let 17,500 go into the town's equipment replacement fund.
Right back where it came from, the purchase, but anyway.
Yep.
The ordinance amendment warnings have been posted in three places around town, and they should have been in the Brandon reporter Wednesday. Andy Moss has agreed to moderate. And we do ask those who are capable of walking to avoid parking in the library parking lot. We don't think it's gonna be an issue. We, I've spoken to the librarian, we're a walkable town. So if you can, park at the church or downtown. Parks and Recreation update, okay, I already spoke towards this. We have, the summer camp planning is in full swing. I drafted a waiver form, and the program is intended to be self-sustaining through its own finances, through its own revenue. The playground is, has already been dropped off, as Selectboard Member Fraser stated earlier. And we're hoping for an install mid-April, late April. And finally, in my report, all three towns made the resolution to provide a $4,000 match.
That's great. Yep.
If you have any questions about those items or any others listed on my report, I'm happy to answer them, but if not, that concludes.
Is there any, any word on like, you have here for the zoning administrator regarding the fires and the cleanups? I just had somebody come and ask me about those, about when they're gonna be taken care of, and I didn't know if you found out anything new?
Yeah. So Anthony's gonna be sending out letters to those residents here fairly soon. The last I knew, I'd worked with the Maces, and they had a not-for-profit group that was gonna help with the cleanup. I'm not sure what the status on that is yet. I assume they're waiting for spring, but spring's here, so we're gonna need an answer soon. But, so, so the fires, yeah, they should be receiving letters soon from Anthony on what the procedure is.
Okay. All right. Sheriff's report. Do you have questions?
Yeah. We're gonna talk about the transfer station.
I think that's, I think you had that later on, didn't you?
Yeah, I added it under the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Missed it. Yep.
Anybody else have any questions on managers' report? Sheriff's report? Any questions, comments?
Yes, in addition to the sheriff's report, I spoke to Lieutenant Bennett today, and there were some break, there were some car break-ins over the weekend. They've received some evidence, you know, in the form of video. And then I've also posted something on the website, you know, he told me just make sure people are, you know, locking their cars up before they go inside, keeping their valuables, taking their valuables in the house, and then contact the sheriff if they have any tips.
Okay. Any questions?
No. They're, seem to be covering the West Proctor Road pretty well. There's been a lot of comments that I've heard on speeding on the West Proctor Road.
Be a good way to meet front and line, speak to that West Proctor.
Okay. W Foreman's report.
There's a general.
We're gonna be in full swing here soon. Kyle and I are meeting this week, and we're gonna put a plan together for April. So things are gonna transition over from winter to summer.
How are we doing on salt?
Salt, we're actually doing pretty good. 650 tons of salt have been used out of the 850 that we budget.
Treasurer's report, any questions or comments on that? Question and action items. Everyone sign the bills?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Next up is to appoint a tree warden to establish select board meeting times, select a newspaper and locations for notices, and review the select board policy, which was adopted in 2020. Looking for a motion to appoint Nick Geneva as tree warden for a term of one year.
Go move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. Motion to hold regularly scheduled select board meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 6:00 PM in the town offices. Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. A motion to post notices at the town office, the post office, and the Proctor Free Library.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Motion to select the Brandon Reporter as the town's primary newspaper of record for public notices in the Rutland Herald as a secondary source.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Motion to accept the existing select board policy without any changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, renew the emergency mutual aid agreement for public works departments. Is there a motion to establish the national incident management system as the town of Proctor's standard for incident management?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Renew the local emergency management plan, L-E-M-P. Motion to adopt the town of Proctor's 2023 local emergency management plan.
There are two revisions I have to make on it, but they're just, they're name, they're contacts for the schools.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with the changes for contact information. Cemetery commissioner duties and responsibilities. So according to Mary, there have been two burial requests for the summer. The commissioner needs to contact all local funeral homes to coordinate these efforts.
Linda Raymond would be interested in helping us with this, but she doesn't want to do it alone. So if we could find some other person to help us with this, it'd be something that we could not have to get too involved with, take a lot of time with, and get some training. Any suggestions?
Would she do it if she knew she had the support of the select board to help?
I, no, not alone. No, she wants somebody to, you know, if it's a Selectboard member, that's fine, but she wants two people, her and someone else.
Like as a backup, I guess? Like I'm saying, if we, if she's gonna make phone calls, I just, a second person would...
There's kind of a training process here that is gonna have to go on, you know? Where is the next vacant lot? How much are they? You have to have cornerstones. You know, there's stuff you have to know, you know, what's the perpetual care cost that is charged to the customer? Do they go on a payment plan? Do they pay it all at once? There's questions.
At one time, the commissioners were updating their little handout. Did they ever complete that?
No idea.
Because that's really something you should just have downstairs in the town office. If someone comes in, just a handout that says. And I know the map is downstairs because when Carol came, she started updating that because the lots are a little...
That's the issue.
Yeah.
So it might be a good idea to get her and at least one or two select board members and maybe Celia downstairs to kind of meet and just kind of go over what we do have as a kind of a training guide.
Yeah.
And then maybe once she, if she saw it, maybe she wouldn't think it's so that she could handle it.
Right.
More so than, you know, having to have somebody else help her.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounded like the only immediate thing that needed to be taken care of was that, and I may not have understood this correctly, but the person that used to dig the graves isn't digging the graves anymore. So we'd have to find somebody who could do that.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
I would be willing to volunteer to get it started. I don't, depending on how much is involved, I don't know if I want to do it permanently, but...
Now that would be helpful.
And that's not to dig the graves, that's just to do the outside work.
Yeah, maybe at least you could drop like a list of things that need to be, you know, like getting someone new to dig them, getting the map, getting, you know, the protocol, the pricing, all that.
I can do that.
Thank you. And do you want, do you want you to reach out to Linda?
Yeah, I'll reach out to her.
I'm sure Celia or Mary will be up for helping you guys out with the immediate logistics.
I believe some of the records are, you know, the old commissioners still have them. So if we could get those eventually, that would be nice.
Bob Coons was one, wasn't he, at one too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually Bob called me a couple of weeks ago and said, you know, whoever is eventually gonna take over, he'd like to meet with him.
That would be a big help. I'll call Bob.
Your first act could be changing New American Flag.
And there's already a wish list. Okay, here we go.
The one there is looking pretty sad.
I haven't driven by there.
Usually Mr. Coons took it down every year during the lunchtime, but I don't know.
I'll have to order it. We've got an open flag over there.
No irony to that.
Yeah, we'll get a picture of it. Let me, before you buy one, let me check. I believe I've got a couple of leftover flags from when we were doing the flags on South Street. Great. That would be one more thing that we could check off the list.
Okay, so the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System, VEMR's membership. Looking for a motion to participate in VEMR's Group B for all eligible public works and talent of office employees that will take effect July 1, 2023. There's also a note, which I can share. Any existing employee will have an election administrator to them by VEMR's as to joining or not joining VEMR's. Any new hires after the effective date will be required as a condition of employment to join VEMR's. So is there a motion to participate in VEMR's Group B for all eligible public works and talent of office employees that will take effect July 1, 2023?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Class 2 highway certificate revision.
Think it only changed by like .01.
Go move.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve revisions to the Class 2 highway certificate. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the transfer station for spring 2023. Do you want to charge for the transfer station? There's hazardous pickup on May 6th. So we're looking for what the hours would be, how many loads can be taken, et cetera. Any thoughts?
Just to jumpstart memory, we, last year, we just did the little, I printed out little tickets. And they came in, whoever wanted to use the transfer station had to come in here, show an ID, get a ticket. And it was actually a pretty good system. We only had one person show up without a ticket. And I let them slide because they had their ID on them, and it was, at the end of the day.
There was no charge last year?
No, there was.
No, there wasn't.
Oh, oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm going back.
There was one year, wasn't there? Like $20 or something?
Few years that we did a charge.
Yeah. It came in a little over five grand. Because you gotta rack it downstairs and then...
Right, yeah, so...
Plus we got overtime and...
Right, yeah.
Do we charge for the brush too? Or do we not do brush last year?
We did brush, but we didn't charge for anything.
No, brush wasn't any charge, but I think we had...
I don't think you ever charged for brush.
$10 for a car and took beans for a pickup or something.
Yeah, and we weren't taking appliances and tires, if I remember right.
Because I think we also had a different for like truckload versus trunkload, right? Like if somebody had a trunk with a couple of bags was different than if somebody had a truck, pickup truck filled.
I think we're thinking back a couple of years at that point.
Yeah, had to be at least.
Guys showed up with a pickup and a trailer. Yeah.
Well, I was, I stayed down there that whole day, and there were some people had three bags of trash, and there were some people who had three trailer loads of trash. So...
I mean, if we're gonna have people with three trailer loads, I mean, and we're not charging, it's, it's just gonna cost more for us.
Well, the upside is it's not in the lawn. It's not in the backyard. You're not sending the zoning administrator out, having to send notices constantly. People aren't coming here complaining. We need it. I get that it's $5,000, but the upside is it's one big swoop. And it gives people kind of that like, oop, do you hear the stuff? Where if you drive around now, there's already a couple chairs and sofas on the front lines, which aren't such lovely things to look at.
I think it went smoothly last year.
Would you say, Ben?
I think it went smoothly last year.
With no charge.
With no charge.
Are you gonna limit, though, I think, like, you know, three truckloads or one load? Yeah, if they come in with a trailer, I mean, that's overkill, I think.
It happens.
Yeah.
Well, that's almost kind of the purpose of it. I mean, we provide curbside pickup, so people get rid of that small stuff throughout the year, but you got that big stuff to get rid of.
Yeah.
I mean, for me personally, if it only, if it cost $5,000 last year, then I just would do it. Do it the same as last year. If people start taking advantage of it, I guess we would have to look at it, but... To me, if you look at the budget and you look at $5,000, it's, I think it's worth it, personally. I could go along with that.
So is it same, you want it same day as hazardous?
May 6th? Hopefully, yes, because a lot of people showed up with like, yeah, small batteries, things like that.
So are we, are we setting a limit, like one truckload, one trailer load? Or, I mean, are you going to want people coming with like three loads of, you know?
I think the only thing you need to be careful about here are where the houses are that are...
That's what I was thinking.
That that doesn't become the...
Part of the drop off.
Disposal area for...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The house where the houses are that are burnt.
Oh.
The time will have expired probably by then for cleanup, correct?
Definitely for a while.
Yes, we, I guess we do need to put some kind of limit. I didn't think of that.
But I think to Ben's credit, I agree, let's do it the same this year, but let's watch and see, you know, how abused it gets by, I mean, if people keep coming with trailers and...
Yeah, we, I actually remember one, one person had rented a U-Haul last year.
Right, yeah.
And they brought it twice, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that's, at least make a contribution, for goodness sake.
It's one of the story.
I know.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem saying a charge after the second load. I don't know if we want to only be charging, you know, I'm just thinking logistic wise, is the same person going to be there the entire time? How are we going to record who's already dropped off and who hasn't?
Well, you could just punch whatever their ticket is.
Right.
You can have someone stand at the gate, and they have to have the ticket to show they can be there, right? So...
We could just say like, one visit. You get one visit for free and then a second visit. Or just one visit.
Yeah, that sounds a good idea.
Try it. So one load?
I mean, if you want a second load, do you think we should just do, allow it and charge? I don't know, that's...
Why would we say that? So first load is complimentary. The second load, what did we do last time, $20?
I mean, I feel like if they come for the second load, it's going to be a big load. It's not going to be like another one bag in their trunk or something.
No, it's going to be another trailer.
Yeah, I don't think $20 is too much if they come in with a trailer or the pickup truck.
Or even a full pickup.
Yeah.
I mean, because if they're doing two loads for $20, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
And brush is free, though.
Yes. No appliances and...
And no appliances, tires.
Yeah, tires. I think we did take furniture, though.
I'll do the, I'll do the button idea, I mean, the punch idea. So I'll just have one, and then make it clear, second punch, $20 or whatever. Well, yeah, I'll figure it out.
You could put that on the ticket.
Yeah.
So the staff have to come here, show ID, get a ticket?
Yeah.
I think that's what makes it go a little bit smoother.
Yeah.
Nobody's finding out that day, I mean...
Yeah, because the first time we did it was like...
Well, people were coming.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, fiscal '24 goals and strategies, future meeting date.
Yeah, I'm certainly not trying to reinvent the wheel here or anything, and I'm not sure if the boards ever partook in an activity like this on the local level, but what I've done is I've taken all of the goals out of the 2020 municipal plan and condensed them into one document minus the enhanced, the goals and the enhanced energy plan, which we can, we can add in there, I just didn't want to make the list too exhausting.
That's exhausting reading.
Yeah, and, well, I had to make it. And then the, I think that was the best format. So the idea of this is, you know, during a regular select board meeting, you know, like in April, we just turn it into a working session, you know? We knocked, we've knocked out a whole lot here at this meeting, which frees us up in April. We go through this list, and I know a few board members have talked to me about, you know, assigning committees, tasks, or a board serving on a committee. This is a really good way to delegate SMART goals to your committees, you know, have them work for you. SMART goals, it's kind of like the new thing now. SMART stands for specific, measurable, attainable, relatable, and time-bound. It's just an acronym, but it's catching ground. So if the board's interested, we can take a meeting in April, put the tables in a circle, invite some committee members here, and just kind of forge a path for FY '24, highlight some of these bigger goals we have for the town.
Sure.
It's going to be a very long meeting?
No.
Yes.
We'll run through it.
Yeah, right.
You going to do this at a regular board meeting, or?
I think it, I think, I think we'd be able to, if you wanted to.
As the only agenda item.
Yeah, working session meeting.
I'm going on vacation that week.
I'm cheering.
Whenever we get any calls.
We're going to be coffee and, uh, definitely not. We just, yeah, we can have representatives from the Republican here, the town commission, Parks and Rec.
We can try it.
Yeah, give it a try, see how it works.
Even if we narrowed it down to things like that concern to the Republican Committee, the Parks and Rec Committee, and just did those to start, that might be good.
Really, if you go through that whole thing, a lot of it might not be valid, and a lot of them are going to be really easy, like village center designation. Well, we've already submitted applications, so that's done, it's been done. So I don't, I don't think it'd take too much time, and, you know, we already participate on Traffic Advisory Council. Really, it's just kind of, to me, it's just an exercise for us all to say, what were the goals established under this kind of big public, that were established under this public document, and just try to stick to them, because some of them are pretty good.
Okay.
All right.
All right. We did the bid opening, so any other business anybody wanted to talk about?
Oh, I should include this under good stuff, but we got our first bill back since we redone the lights on Marble Bridge, and I did the comparison. Last March, March of last year, the March bill for the bridge was 180 somewhat dollars, and this year it was 60.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so the LED bulbs make a difference.
That's good. All right, so there is the need for executive session for the evaluation of a public employee's performance in accordance with 1 VSA Section 313A 3. Is there a motion to find that premature general knowledge regarding a personnel matter would clearly place the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage if discussed in public?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to enter executive session to perform the town manager's annual performance review under the provisions of 1 VSA Section 313A 3.
Motion to move to executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.